All right, everybody. The time is now 7:31 and we will call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and follow Commissioner Scheffler in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Scheffler. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Jolai Brown and Commissioner Vasani are excused. Commissioner Cheryl Rose will be serving as active chair or acting chair. Commissioner Austin?
Here.
Brown? Oops, excuse me, excuse. Scheffler?
Here.
Stahira?
Here.
Acting Chair Rose?
Here.
All right. I believe technically I'm still the chair.
Yes, and we have one more. We have our new Commissioner, Commissioner Janisak.
Here.
Excellent. Now we're all present and accounted for. Moving right along, next item on the agenda, given that it's a new year, is reorganization. I believe Director Bermejo, you have a briefing for us.
Yes, Chair Stahira, thank you very much. Thank you for serving for the 2425 fiscal year, the Planning Commission. I think you have had a great year. There's been a lot of work that you've led the commission on, including a lot of housing element implementation tasks. So I wanted to thank you, and I'm sure the commissioners will have some words as well. But as the commission knows, each July, we go through a reorganization where we, the commission recommends the selection of a new vice chair and chair. And the policy is, the city follows a specific policy. Generally speaking, the vice chair is next up to serve as chair. As the commission knows, Commissioner Bill Schief did not reapply for that appointment, so there's currently a vacancy. And then we follow the next formula to fill then the vice chair position. So the first term commissioner that was serving at least one year, and in this case, this would have been Commissioner Jolai Brown. Now, she's not with us tonight, but she would be up next to serve as, in the vice chair role, because that's vacant, she's next to serve as chair. And then for the next in line after Commissioner Jolai would be Cheryl Rose. So staff recommends that the commission, that Commissioner Jolai Brown be elected as chair of the Planning Commission and that Commissioner Cheryl Rose be elected as vice chair. And the selection process does require a motion in the voting.
Before we get into discussion of that, I just wanted to thank everyone for the great year. It was my distinct pleasure to serve as the chair for the last year, and I think we accomplished a lot as a group, and I'm proud to have been a part of that. And of course, want to recognize all of the hard work and the efforts from the city staff and thank our council liaison, Edward Beldon, for his participation as well. So, thank you all. But moving along to the order of business at hand, do we have any discussion on the reorganization?
I can make a motion.
I will take your motion, Commissioner Austin.
I move that we elect Jolai R. Brown as chair and Commissioner Cheryl Rose as vice chair for the commission year 2526 fiscal year.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Fantastic. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Janisak?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Rose? Yes.
Fantastic. Without the motion carries, so our new chair, presuming she accepts, will be Commissioner Brown. And that makes our new vice chair Commissioner Rose. And I believe at this point, it would be proper to hand the reins over for the rest of the meeting to Commissioner Rose. Commissioner Rose, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stahira, and thank you for your leadership last year. You did a more than fabulous job. Appreciate it. Sheri, are you, are you doing the introduction of new commissioners?
Sure.
Are we, is that, is that a?
It's an official part of our agenda this evening, and we would like to introduce Mr. Lyle Janisak, who was just appointed to the commission this year. Tonight's his first meeting. He does have some land use background, and we met his family this evening, and he's very excited to be here, and I think you're going to be a great addition to the commission.
Welcome, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
So, moving on, approval of the minutes. The minutes of our regular meeting of June 11th. Are there any corrections, additions, discussion, commissioners? If not, can I have a motion and a second to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from June 11th, 2025, regular meeting?
I'll second.
We'll just do a voice, a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Now, moving on to public input. This is a time when anyone in the public that wants, that wants to speak on an item that is not on our agenda can come to the podium and address that item. Is there anyone here that wants to do that? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing on the agenda is CUP 2025-0005. This is to approve a conditional use permit for the state alcoholic beverage control type 41 license to allow the incidental, incidental sale and onsite service of beer and wine for onsite consumption for a new restaurant, Sushi Kyo. The subject property is located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, and I believe we're going to hear a staff report from Mr. Austin Arnold.
Thank you, Acting Chair Rose, and good evening commissioners. Tonight before you, we do have a conditional use permit to allow incidental sale and onsite service of beer and wine for a new restaurant, Sushi Kyo. And this is at 131 to 141 South Myrtle Avenue. And Mr. Yim, who's in the audience with us representing Sushi Kyo, was with us tonight. So the subject site is located in the Foothill Park Plaza. Some of the, this is the Vons Shopping Center, used to be called Safeway back in the day. And this is near the corner of West Foothill Boulevard and South Myrtle Avenue and is located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone. And the reason is before you tonight is municipal code, specifically section 1744025, does require a CUP when alcohol is sold or served within 500 feet of any residential zone, park, school, rec center, religious assembly, or hospital. Now, the subject site is located within 500 feet of Library Park, the Community Recreation Center, and is also within 500 feet of the International Full Gospel Fellowship Church. So that is the reason is before you tonight. A little bit of background, the subject site, like I said, was in the, is, is in the Foothill Park Plaza Shopping Center. It has previously been occupied mostly by restaurants for the specific location, this tenant space, also with alcohol service, most recently Chronic Tacos. Unfortunately, Chronic Tacos, they received their approval in 2021, but sadly, they have left the city, and they, the space has been vacant since November of 2024. And as such, that CUP, that previous CUP has expired, and the new restaurant is requesting a new one. And currently, Sushi Kyo is currently completing their tenant improvements as we speak. They anticipate to be open in the next month or two. Regarding the business operations, the applicant is proposing incidental sale and service of beer and wine for a new restaurant. It'll be a first full-service restaurant. It'll offer Japanese cuisine in the form of specializing in high-quality sushi. They provide a variety of menu options, including sushi, sashimi, poke bowls, mental boxes, all in a casual indoor dining. Additionally, the restaurant would like to include the incidental sale and service of beer and wine. Specifically, they'll be adding Japanese beer and sake. It should be noted that the project was fully and duly noticed within 300 feet of the subject property with a mailed postcard and newspaper notice. No comments have been received up to this point, and no comments or input was provided at the advisory review before DRC on June 18th. It'll include indoor dining, about 72 seats. Hours of operation are proposed from Sunday through Thursday from 11:30 to 9:30 p.m., and Friday and Saturdays from 11:30 to 10:00 p.m. This does require a type 41, which is a beer and wine license from the Alcohol Board Control, so Alcohol Beverage Control, and again, the CUP before you tonight. Here we have the proposed floor plan. As you walk in, if you're facing westbound, north being, you know, upwards of the street at the bottom of the image, you'll have a small reception area as you walk in. You'll be greeted and sat by typically a server or back of house person. You would also have the dining area in kind of the yellow color. This is 72 seats in total. About 16 of those would be the bar seating or the sushi bar, one of those being, one additional seat, I'm sorry, for ADA space, which would have a lower countertop. The rest of it would be the back of house kitchen and two ADA restrooms, which is almost the exact same floor plan as the Chronic Tacos, just with a facelift, so. We are requesting pertinent conditions of approval. Some of the more specific ones, that any change or intensification would require an amendment to the CUP that would be brought back before you tonight at a later date, if so, if they choose to. Any window signs will be placed and maintained to ensure a clear and unobstructed view from the, of the interior from the exterior of the premises. The business hours of operation are limited as they have proposed them. Staff has made no recommendation of changes to what they've proposed. Any modification would require DRC review if they choose to modify those hours. The onsite service and sale of beer and wine, this does have to be operated by, as a bona fide eating place, subject to ABC. That's their first condition. All quarterly gross sales can't exceed 33% of their gross overall sales. And then alcohol service is limited specifically to the indoor dining area. No outdoor dining is proposed at this time, and that all alcohol does, should be accompanied by food. That does conclude my presentation. Staff is recommending approval with conditions as listed in the staff report. I am happy to answer any questions and the applicant as well, if there are any. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Do any of the commissioners have any questions regarding the staff report?
Just simple.
Yes.
The type 41 covers sake, like a rice, or like a, like a wine product?
It's a rice, technically, it's a rice wine, so it is under wine.
I don't think we've had that before.
Yes.
Or I forgot. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, staff?
One thing I noticed, we've approved several permits for ABC licenses in the last year or so, and the hours for the other restaurants were all 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Was there a reason that this one is a little bit less than that? And is there any downside to expanding the hours?
Staff typically proposes it as the applicant requests the hours. We are always happy to, if they would like to stay open later. So if the commission would like to increase their hours so that they do not have to come back to ask for later hours, we would be happy to amend the conditions to do so.
Okay.
Is that something that you want to have considered?
Yeah, I would consider.
So let's save that until after the public hearing is closed. Right now is the time for questions only, but we can have this discussion after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. I noticed condition number 24, it just caught my eye. It says, "No happy hour drink specials or other bar promotions are permitted to be advertised outside or in the window slash door area." And that was a condition that was in some of our recent CUPs that we've approved, but not in the one for fillet. Is there a reason that we've added this condition recently?
We, it typically, it has been more of a standard condition of approval. There has been some back and forth with regards to what can, can't be said in terms of signage per the law. So I think most recently, that was probably removed from fillet, and as such, we can also remove that condition as well.
Yeah, I noticed it's, it's in Szechuan Garden and Kin Kao Thai Eatery and this one, but not in the one for fillet. I don't have an opinion either way.
Just a statement.
But just an observation and curious about the background. That's all my questions.
Any others? Okay, if not, I will now open the public hearing to testimony. Will we see testimony in this order from the applicant first, then persons in favor, and persons with concerns? So is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak to the commission? No, you, you choose, you don't have any, anything to add or to address the commission with? Okay, all right. Anybody in the audience that's in, that wants to speak in favor of, of the CUP? Spoke in favor but silently. Okay, anyone opposed? No? All right, so we don't have any rebuttal. And do the commissioners have any questions of the applicant, since the applicant is here? Do the commissioner, do any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant? None? Okay, then I will close this public hearing and ask for a motion to move this item forward?
Or there can also be a discussion before the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Is there any more discussion now? Is this when we can discuss what Commissioners Stahira?
Yes, now is the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would propose to make it consistent with the other CUPs that we've approved recently and just change the hours to 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, unless there's any downside to that.
No, staff doesn't believe there's any downside, and I think being a business friendly is very, is very much Monrovia.
Yeah.
The other item that I wanted to address was the condition of approval. So I think we have some older CUPs, conditions of approval, that limit the type of signage on what you can put, but there are stricter sign regulations that are in place and freedom of speech law. So staff is actually, the city is not able to regulate. We can only regulate signs based on place, time, place, and manner. Is that your understanding? Yes, we can't regulate signs based on content.
Correct.
Just time, place, and manner. So why don't, I recommend that we, we remove that condition for further consistency moving forward, and we'll make sure we're making that move forward in all of our applications.
That sounds fair.
Yeah.
That's condition number 24.
Everybody in agreement with that? Yes. Okay, can I ask for a motion, please?
So I move to approve CUP 2025-005, as amended with the hours updated daily 11:00 a.m. to midnight, and with condition number 24 regarding happy hour advertisement stricken.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Janisak?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Acting Chair Brown? Excuse me, Acting Chair Rose?
Yes.
Apologies.
It's okay. Moving on to administrative reports, which there are none, but we have Community Development Director Report, and Director Sheri Bermejo will talk about commission assignments.
Yes, thank you. So it feels different. We're all sitting in different places. We're getting a little, our names confused because it's, it's all changed up. So we appreciate your patience with us this evening. But another thing that the commission does every, the beginning of every fiscal year is discuss commissioner, commissioner assignments. So the Planning Commission does support two review bodies. One is the Art in Public Places Committee, and the second is the Board of Appeals. Each of those committees have different time commitments. The Board of Appeals has been meeting just once a year. They, the, the purpose of the Board of Appeals is really to consider appeals of the administrative decisions and determinations all contained in the building and construction codes, and that's in Title 15 of the Monrovia Municipal Code. That would occur if a developer or an applicant wants to appeal one of the decisions of the building official, then, or fire code, then a meeting would be held. And like I said, the last couple of years, they've been meeting once a year, generally every August. So presently, we do have three commissioners that are serving. There are some requirements in order to make good, sound decisions. We do, the municipal code requires experience in either building, construction, planning, architecture, fire science, engineering. For the last several years, we, the commissioners serving in that capacity have been Commissioners Austin, Scheffler, and Vasani. It's up to the commission to either discuss selecting new, appointing new members to that committee, or the, the commission can also keep the committee status quo. It's, it's under your purview. So we can, why don't we want to discuss that one first among the commission, and then I can move on to the Art in Public Places Committee?
I guess the question would be, is Commissioner Austin still wanting to participate on?
I can participate at the annual meeting. We got close one time to having a meeting. Close.
And, and?
Commissioner Scheffler?
And do we just let Vasani sail with the ship as well?
Since he's not here today and can't defend himself, he's reappointed.
He's in it.
Very, very nice.
Okay. So?
So why don't we, why don't?
Do we need to vote on this?
A vote on that, just to memorialize it.
Do we need a roll call, or can we do a voice vote?
Maybe do a roll call, just.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Yes, and a motion, please.
I move to reappoint Commissioners Austin, Scheffler, and Vasani to the Board of Appeals.
And I'll second that.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Janisak?
Yes.
Acting Chair Rose?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and the next committee that the Planning Commission participates in is the Art in Public Places Committee, and that committee is made up of one Planning Commissioner, one Historic Preservation Commissioner, Community Services Commission, Commissioner, and then a resident at large. The purpose of the Art in Public Places Committee is to review public art. Monrovia is full of public art. It adds to the entire ambiance of the city. It celebrates art, the, the history of, of the city, and it also has discretion in the use of Art in Public Places funds that are collected through different types of development projects. So for the past year, Commissioner Jolai Brown has served in that capacity, and it was the commission's decision in January of 2020 to bring it back to the commission to see if anyone else was interested in participating in that. To date, we've had both Commissioners Bill Schief and then new Chair Jolai have been participating. So we would just like to see if the commission would like to select a different commissioner to serve or maintain status quo. It's completely under the commission's purview.
Has Commissioner Brown, did she notify you that she would still be interested in doing?
She did not.
I, I actually spoke with her, and she is interested in continuing.
Okay.
For what that's worth.
Thank you. I mean, I wouldn't want to vote for her to be on that if she didn't have the time or didn't want to do it any longer. So with that, can we have a motion then to move forward with Commissioner Brown being on the Arts Commission?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Commissioner Brown to serve on the Art in Public Places Committee.
I'll second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Janisak?
Yes.
Acting Chair Rose?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And then the next item, I just wanted to brief the commission with a few of our updates. The inclusionary housing ordinance has gone through its first and second reading, and it will go into effect next week. Time passes quickly. The other update I wanted to provide you, the commission received an email regarding the release of a new draft EIR for the project at 701 South Myrtle Avenue. This is a mixed-use project that's proposed. The EIR is going to be circulated for a 45-day period. It's accessible on the city's website, and anyone who has public comments regarding that will be able to facilitate them through our planning email, which is planning@monrovia.ca.gov. And we will be providing copies, hard copies of this document for the commission. The project will likely come to you later in the fall. So we will keep you posted. They're very big documents, so we just wanted to give you a head start on the review. And then last but not least, I wanted to share that our neighborhood business services team has been very active in soliciting folks who want to use our Monrovia Area Partnership Block Party trailer. This past week, Channel 7 did a little news clip of one of the use of the trailer. This was on Highland Place. It was very fun. You can Google "Monrovia Block Party," and you'll get to see who was actually on the news. Yes, I was, it was really fun. It was, we really had a good time. I was able to be there. Mayor Becky Shovlin was there. There were so many kids out there playing. The Block Party trailer has so many different activities, tables, chairs, games. It was a really nice event, and it was an event that really felt Monrovia. It was just very wholesome and special, special night. So I think Channel 7 did a very good job, kind of showcasing, excuse me, the, the activities that we do here in Monrovia that are meaningful.
How do we, how do we, how do folks?
Yes, if you're interested.
Express interest in?
Absolutely. If you're interested in this program, you can come to the city's website under Community Development, and it's the Monrovia Area Partnership Block Party Trailer. You can contact our, our city line, 626-932-5565, and we will connect you with the sign-up. We do ask that you give us several weeks in advance to, to book it, in case it is booked. And the city does offer a small stipend if for need, in the amount of close to $250. It's generally dropped off on a Friday and then picked up on a Monday.
Okay, good information.
Did you put the clip on the Community Development website?
We are going to.
Okay.
Yes, we are going to.
That's always good for PR and people who can do it.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay, boy, this has been a short one, huh? I said to the, to our new commissioner that he got to step into the low end of the pool for this, this meeting, because the deep end's coming up. So with? So with that, are there any other announcements or reports from any of the commissioners? No, we're good? Okay, then I adjourn this meeting at 8:00. Thank you all, see you next month.